You are.
I think they might not be able to hear us.
Are you muted?
No, I don't think so. Dave, don't work, can you hear us? Someone online?
Yeah, yes.
I can hear.
That box says seven or six minutes, so all this can be to order. Are there any adjustments to the meeting?
Yes, I would like to add consideration of Council Resolution 2024-01.
Do we want to put that, or who do you like that?
I was gonna say, we're okay with consent agenda, I'm okay with consent agenda.
Has everybody read it?
It was emailed. Okay, everyone's good consent agenda, sounds good to me.
Just as a point where Councilor will need to come back next week.
Yeah, correct.
I'd like to add consecutive session elimination.
Any additional additions or revisions? No, all right, moving on to visitors and communications. Anyone here for, to speak to the council? Bern? Bern Rose?
Hi, thank you. I just wanna say thank you to all the people who went out on Sunday in that really snowy day. I was scheduled to go out and help with the canvassing. And it was just more than what I was up to doing, so thank you to all of our community of people who are working together to help work on the flood recovery.
All right, anyone else? All right, now moving to the next agenda, which is the consent agenda. All right, and this does include the Resolution 2024-01. And we have a motion in a second, do we have discussion?
And there are no clerk licenses or permits.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to city clerk and treasurer.
Just, I did put something out on the front court forum the end of last week, just a reminder that now we're in the new year. People can make requests for absentee ballots for the, for the year. So we're getting a lot of requests in, you can either do it through the My Voter page website, or you can call the office or stop into the office. The My Voter page link is on the city website if you go to the election section. The link is there, the link is also there if you are yet registered in Berry City, the link is there to register, or again, you can come register in the office. That's it.
All right, liquor and cannabis control.
We have it this week, but there will be some stuff next week.
All right, next item, city managers' report.
Thanks, Councilor Gooden, just a couple of updates, the Northland Public Engagement Meetings are scheduled, just a reminder for folks. The Citywide Meeting is Wednesday, the 17th of January at the Liver Hall from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And the Ward Meetings have been scheduled as well, Ward Two Meeting will be Wednesday, 24th of January at the Brook Street School, which is 45 Brook Street, and that's from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. The Ward One Meeting will be Thursday, January 25th, at Spalding High School Library on 155 Air Street, also from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And the Ward Three Meeting will be Monday, January 29th, at the Mutro on 20 Beckwood Street from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. Just flagging for people, the Ward Three Meeting was originally scheduled for 22nd, moved due to facility availability to the 29th. 22 Hill Street.
Sorry, just a quick thing, just as I was leaving City Hall, Tess wanted me to tell you that the survey is now live on the website.
Oh, good, so, yeah, so we're doing some surveys, some data collection, which is part of the canvassing. It's live on our website, so we'll encourage people, we'll get that on our social media as well, to get people to build it up, kind of collect data, figure out what the needs are, get responses ahead of time, so that we can better inform the discussions moving forward. Second update is, you've driven by it, you've seen that 22 Hill Street has been demolished. This is great news, the city sold this in tax sale to Habitat for Humanity on July 7th, the Friday before the flood. And so really excited that that's moving forward. Looking forward to the new home added to, more housing and grand was invaluable when that home was destroyed. Update to council, we started our advocacy at the legislature in earnest. Testified at Senate Finance today about our operational needs to close our budget gaps. And then testifying at Senate GovOps tomorrow, so that's really starting to pick up, we'll be spending a lot of the time in the legislature, working really closely with theNI. As we do so, and then just to find a little, and we mentioned this to council last month, but the city of Berry will begin recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a city holiday effective January 15th of this year. This will mark, it'll be the 30th year since the holiday has been recognized by the state of Vermont. We all know Dr. King had a profound role in the country's history. His nonviolent leadership of the civil rights movement led him to becoming the first modern private citizen to be honored with a federal holiday. That holiday was enacted by, passed by Congress and signed by President Reagan into law in 1983. But it took 17 years before every state recognized it, so we will be recognizing it in the city of Berry, starting this year.
Great, all right. All right, moving on to new business, review list of funding requests for manual meeting ballots. Do you know SSR communities or dubs?
Well, I put it, there's the information was in your packet, the governmental funding and then the list, along with the applications and financial the basic financial reports for each of the organizations, I did not include all the 990s because it was already on our 20-page law or something like that. So we had all but one of the organizations that had been, that were approved for this current year submitted their applications by the January 2nd deadline. And were deemed complete with regards to the application and the supporting documents that are part of the packet. With the exception of Good Beginnings, they are currently in our budget or over approved for $1,000. They had a change of leadership and their new executive director is slipped by her. She contacted me the day after, I did tell her that, that there is an opportunity to make a request directly of council. And I don't know whether she or anybody on board is, is here, anybody who zoomed in is here representing, representing Good Beginnings, but the as for our, as for the charter, the council is supposed to, what did I put here? It's the action to review the list and determine outside organization funding amounts within manager's recommended budget, not to exceed the prior year's budget. And it doesn't, obviously, so it's being mostly just presented to all of you, and if there's any public comment, this would be the opportunity to do that.
All right, any comment from council? None, from the guests? None, all right.
Just a second, one moment, when does, with regard to New Beginnings, when, when do they have to submit that request, council, what is the reason?
They could, they could have up until the 30th, when the council approves the warning. So, so it could come, it could come anytime this week, next week, the 23rd or the 30th.
Great, thank you.
One of the things that is to mention is that if we do bump out the town meeting day to May, they would, they would have time to get a petition to normal warning time, correct?
Right, I mean, they, the petition deadline is next Monday, so anybody who is petitioning has until, no, sorry, it's the 19th. Yeah.
Unless we bump that, right?
In which case it would.
Be whatever, six weeks before.
No, that's the, that's the nominating petition deadline, that's different than the petition for a question on ballot.
But either way, we're giving them ample amount of time if we do bump it out to May for them to get signatures.
If, if they wanted to do that, yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to next item, may councilors work on charter changes or town meeting consideration. And we start the conversation, and if councils have questions, comments?
Can you volunteer for them?
Okay, so Sam, Councilor Stockwell would like to volunteer, any comments?
And what one we could have, so someone else to volunteer.
Because otherwise, it's just you, it's not me.
How much time is it gonna take? More than you think.
So we, just for context, we have shared these with a lawyer, a city attorney, we're expecting feedback sometime next week. I think we'll know how much time it'll take after we get their feedback, but.
Thank you. So we have two people.
So.
Do we hear three?
I will say that I will be voting no on this, because I think the only charter changes we should be putting forward are the ones removing the step, the language on school system or the school district. Not interested in moving forward any language about allowing children to vote, or removing people they bother in this front place, so, but with that, I guess we need a motion to appoint.
Okay, so let me, should I speak to the two charter changes?
Me. Sure.
I think we don't need a motion, just when we get to that, so.
Okay. So.
So we're all right?
That's it? But in that case, I guess we move on.
If Councilor Stockwell wanted, I mean, it's your chair of the meeting, but.
Yeah.
I'd work if you want us to come in.
I think there are good reasons to encourage youth to vote, 16 and 17-year-olds, you know, I teach 16 and 17-year-olds now because I'm from a college at CCV. And I have to say that many of them are just as knowledgeable, not more so about issues than people of any age. The other advantage to that, I think, is it will encourage to the engagement and possibly investment in municipal government. Or at least an understanding of municipal government, I think it's a great opportunity to provide this stuff. So, so I think it would do some good things. And it would provide a great opportunity for young people to become aware of that, and to understand how important municipal government is, and kind of what we do here. And I, I would, I think it is important to limit the committees to Berry City residents, with some exceptions, I would accept cemeteries, and I would accept the House's committee, but otherwise, I think there's no, all the committee meetings are open, so anyone can attend, and anyone can speak to any issue. So really limiting to Berry City residents means you limit the decision-making to Berry City residents, which to me is not entirely appropriate. And hence ends my speech.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah. I'm not sold on either. It'll be, and that's why I think some people confuse the fact that I voted for the hearings as courtesy unless a council brings up something that I find absolutely offensive. I'll always support the right to present it to the council and have a, have a healthy discussion, you know, having said that, like I said, allowing minors to vote. I'm going to be interested in hearing both sides, and I hope we can have a civil and healthy debate on that issue. I'm struggling with limiting, I know so many good people, I know people in Berry County that care more, more about Berry City than some people in their city. And, and they do have, by virtue of owning a business, or being active in the community, or being active with BYSA, they do have a vested interest in what goes on in the city, so, and we've seen before, I mean, how many we pared our committees down, or how many members, and I'm not saying that was a bad decision, it was a right thing, because they were getting a little out of hand. But one of the reasons we did that is we couldn't even find people to volunteer for some of those committees, so I'm struggling, you know, in that atmosphere with limiting our pool of applicants even further. That's kind of what I'm struggling with, and I do, you know, I do think of people like Bob Nelson, who, you know, was a real hero during the flood, despite the fact that he didn't have you know, he's making change the old-fashioned way, and he suffered an incredible amount of damage to his store. He made sure that he opened it so that, and made sure that he put in a special order for some of them, so that he could help us anyways. And I think, you know, that type of dedication, I don't want to do anything to discourage that, that's all. But I look forward to the discussion, and thank you for the opportunity.
All right, any other comments? So if we don't have to appoint, we're just gonna say with consent that Councilor Shendell and Councilor Stockwell are in this committee? Is that good?
We'll put this on next week's agenda, if you want to continue the discussion. And then, of course, it's on the agenda for the 23rd of the first year.
Which, once again, if we do push off the town meeting day, it will also be pushed off.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the next one, next item, set legislative priorities. Mayor Johnson, Rowley, Cacher.
Thanks, Councilor Gooden, so, thank you, Council, I think Mayor Gooden. The packet included the results of a survey we sent out to councilors, which listed several of the priorities that we had discussed at the prior meeting, and I should mention, we're joined by Maggie Lance, who's probably has the distinction of being the most frequent texter now to my phone since we've hired theNI, she's really keeping me up to, up to speed on what's happening at the Capitol. So the, there was a chart in the packet that showed the results, we, you know, had a rudimentary weighting system, just to give some sort of meaning to the, to the results of the survey, and from that methodology, what came out was four clear priorities ranked in order of one, foregone revenue, operational funding, that's really to get us the money, we need to quote the gap in our budget, which we'll be talking about shortly. The second priority out of that process was housing development, an eight-way project. And then two were tied with three points, and that was capital infrastructure, specifically calling out the Public Works Garage. And then transportation infrastructure, mentioning bridges, trestle, and the very Montpelier bike path. There were, I'd asked councilors to rank the top five, if we want to go with four priorities, that's fine. If council would like to set five priorities, there were three that sort of came in tied for that fifth spot, if council, if council would like to designate one of those as the fifth priority. I leave it to you, but those were the results of the, of the survey that we put out. I think it was pretty clear, obviously, that the foregone revenue was, was top, and housing right behind it. But so, leave it to you about what, what the top five things we should be talking about when Maggie, myself, and others are walking the halls of the Capitol this summer.
Councilor Wilson.
Thank you.
Councilor Watson.
Go, go ahead, Dave, Eric.
No, I was, I was just gonna say that I think I'm fine with going with these four. I think five would look like a number to help us little things down, these are the ones that clearly rise above, and I also think that there's just a pitch there for the Public Works Garage to be flood-related. It's been in the flood coming longer than anything in the city has, so that just further complicates the pressure, so I just think there's an argument there, and also trying to add to the flood as well, but keeping our flood going on, operating, operationally, that's still what I think is most important.
So, thank you, so the Sanders appropriation, Nicholas, that has a shelf life, right?
It, it does, but we have, one of our first calls after the flood was to USDA to say, hey, we're, we need a, a break here. So they told us that, that that money is still secure, it did have, you're correct, they did have a shelf life, we were supposed to pull and help, I'm looking at, I think it was late September, dawn or two, I think late September, we were supposed to come up with a match. In July, one of our first calls was to say, hey, we're not gonna make late September, so they've given us already a year, and they said that further extensions are possible as well.
Okay, didn't, I knew we had the one-year extension, I didn't hear the part about further extension.
There's the main, yeah.
So the reason that was ranked once, the reason I ranked it that one time was because I wasn't aware that further extensions are possible, and I understood that we only had until September of 2024 to secure that funding, and it's such a, I mean, I know with all of our needs, but, you know, we don't very often get, we don't very often turn our backs on a multimillion-dollar grant, even though it needs some stretch to match, so that was the reason I had, I had ranked it three, so I'd be willing to, I'd be, so knowing that, I'd be willing to, that further extension is possible, which I didn't know, I'd be willing to withdraw the rank and leave us at five. But we have, oh, you go with the four, or do you want to add something?
Well, we would still have two tied, so there's still the, the keep the courthouse downtown is.
Right, what if I withdraw my, oh, keep the courthouse downtown?
That was added.
Somebody thinking about moving? I mean, there's always talk about it, that comes up every session, but, and then I'm talking to Chair Graham, and I don't think there's a whole lot of money to be moving courthouse right now.
But you're suggesting Councilor Wilson, that would leave us with substance abuse, public safety as the number five?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, if, if there's no objection from the council, I can withdraw my rank on, on the Sanders match. And if whoever ranked the courthouse would be happy to withdraw their rank on that, then that would be listed with a five, substance abuse being the, the.
That sounds, but could someone speak to why the courthouse being moved is?
So that was, I can speak to that, that was added by the mayor. That wasn't on the original list that went up to the council. That was added by the mayor, and it made this list because of the, just the point values that he gave it. We've been in touch with SD, with BGS, Janet gave us a list of potential sites, and now they've spoken to them about renovating the building, I don't have any any knowledge that they're actively thinking of moving, but.
I mean, given the fact that there is no courthouse in Montpelier right now, even though it needs to be restored, you know, again, I'm not I do spend a fair amount of time speaking with representatives and senators, and I'm not aware that that's really high on the list of buildings in general, so I think what's high on their list is restoring Montpelier, and restoring the courthouse that they have, so you know, with all the respect to the mayor, if we, if we just remove my, you know, my ranking and his ranking, that would leave us at five. And that's what I would suggest to council, recommend you do.
Councilor, Aaron?
So even a suggestion could be that, you know, public safety could also be, you know, good or bad with keeping the courthouse downtown. So if you kind of loop that in with public safety, maybe even, and combine them?
So, it's my understanding that, that even, even though we have our ranks, but obviously, we like our lobbyists to, you know, vote for everything, right? And you're, you're gonna do that? Yep, I'm giving it as.
She's looking wrong.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I respond quickly?
Yep, yes, please.
Okay, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing, so I'm trying my best to keep up, the sound is just a little off, but I'm happy to work off a list that's ranked, I just want to let you guys know that I don't think it's necessary to rank them, I think having a list of your priorities, when I go into the State House, and when my colleagues go into the State House, we are going to be looking at all of those priorities, right? Our main goal right now is to make Berry whole. Whether that's housing, really, anything that intersects with flooding, that is our main goal. Things like the charter, you know, substance abuse issues, having those on a piece of paper is very helpful, because when we see issues come up, we are going to let you know, and you can tell us if you want to pull the trigger on something. However, ranking them isn't really going to change, I think, our approach, which is number one, anything that's going to help make Berry whole, and number two, everything else, so.
So I think probably what we should do is maybe just submit the list that we have, based on that information that Maggie just provided.
When you say the list that we have, what do you mean?
The one that was presented.
Well, just like all of them, or just the ones that are highlighted?
Because, because she's saying that she just, it doesn't matter if you rank them or not. That's, if I understand that correctly, Maggie, is that right?
Yeah, I'm saying that essentially, blood relief is number one, and in my mind, everything else, we're not necessarily proactively, you know, you haven't hired us to proactively work on a charter change. However, if that comes up, we're gonna talk to you about it, and then if there's something to do, you know, we'll, we'll let you know and grease the wheels and help move it along. But I think, you know, we know our job is to make you whole, that may include housing, that may include, you know, the abatement bill. Everything else, our eyes are open, we're listening, we're gonna let you know when it comes up, I don't necessarily think it's gonna help us to have it, to have it ranked. Just because it's not proactively what we're working for you on.
So basically, just sending you the list of the things that we want, and you were listening to the conversation, so you understand. So I would, I would just say, if we want to make a motion to submit the list to, to them?
I'd make a motion to submit a list of all the ones that we have highlighted. The ones that nobody ranked as important, or the ones that honestly, the courthouse, oh, it's a huge, like, state highway needs, now, charter's, like. The point of going through prior process is to establish priorities, so if we just submit the entire list that we started. The point of going through priorities processes to establish priorities. So if we just submit the entire list that we started, that's not actually seven priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I would make a motion to submit the highlighted items on this list as our legislative priority.
So there will be a total of seven, Captain, what you're?
Seven is better than eleven, yes.
Okay, second.
Discussion? Just make a point that you just said that the priority is, they know what they, that's okay. The other discussion from Republic. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion to discuss this. All right. Moving on to the budget.
If you like, Mayor. Quick study. So thanks, Council. This is really the, the primary for us to be here tonight. And so I'll, I'll move through this. Because we've seen much of this, I just want to sort of let you know what the changes have been since our last meeting discussing the budget. So you've seen this, our budget is fixed, wages and benefits, and most of it is paid for through property taxes. The impacts, all the inputs into the city budget were significantly impacted, revenue because of property tax abatement, expensive because of fronting many of the costs of the flood recovery and just some of the other headwinds that we're facing, and then cash flows to, to prepay those expenses. So these are the, these are the headwinds I mentioned. We have union contracts that had increases built into them, healthcare costs were increased by the Green Mountain Healthcare Board. We had $497 just in contractual increases, I would call them, things like fuel, things like contract with escalators, just the, the regular run of business, things that go up. We came up with $93,000 in unit tax revenue, which is great. Unfortunately, we depleted the fund balance due to paying for flood expenses and we're projecting a 3.68 loss of grand list value. So, we identified at the staff level $526,000 in very deep cuts to services. All of these details are, are provided in the, in the, further in the appendix of the slide presentation. So in order to restore cuts and maintain tax increase consistent with last year's amount, that required $1.45 million in external funding. After council feedback at our last discussion on the budget, we targeted a 5% tax increase with some restorations of those cuts. And so here's our new formula. So we, myself and Don went through the list. We consulted with our department heads. We restored almost about half, so $247,000 of the cuts were restored. And you can see in the packet which ones were restored, but things that we kept were savings that we could maintain. There were things like energy savings, things, things like savings from the sale of the wheel lock house, things like that, that we didn't have to restore, we didn't. So by restoring $247,000, we only need, only in quotations, $975,000 in external operational funding to get to a 4.78 projected tax rate increase.
Could I, oh, yeah.
Could I, do you mind?
Of course. So what cuts, and I like your, your slides, I just, I need numbers in front of it. What, could you just go through the list of cuts that were not restored?
Yeah, so, so, Councilor, I think if you go to the appendix, starting on slide 13.
Okay, you're gonna get there then.
Oh, yeah, I can show. You're gonna get through, break. Well, we, we can run through them, absolutely. So some of the key restoration, we'll get through the details, but some of the key restorations are $91,000 for this junior planner position, $32,500, which would be a 50% restoration of cemetery's seasonal staff, $30,000, which would be fully funding the Aldridge Public Library. And then I think this was a positive one, $6,815, which would not just restore yard waste disposal use, but it would actually give us year, a full season use of the yard waste disposal site at Berrytown. So we would, now the residents could use it. Every time it's open for Berrytown, our residents could use it as well, which I think is a great partnership. I really appreciate Chris and the select board for opening that up for us. I, I will say that, we'll get through the detail of the cuts that were restored, but this is very much still a house of cards budget. If we don't, that $975,000 is doing a lot of work in that equation. If we don't get that from the state or somewhere close to it, we are back to where we were a couple of weeks ago, which is continuing a higher increase, looking to labor for savings, and, you know, basically finding that $975,000 in a combination of cuts and property tax increases. Not a good combination, right? So this is, we feel positive about it, but there's a lot that needs to happen for that budget to be reality, and that's $975,000 from, from the state. So we'll, we'll get started. I, I will go through, this is just some references. These are some of the, you've seen these before. These are the non-tax revenue increases. The big one here is some pilot payments that the state projected to be higher, which really helps us. $23,000 in civic center rentals, which we're projecting in large part from the purchase of the turf. This is just some background. You've also seen this. This is our, our calculation on the 3.68 reduction in grand list value, which again, this is, it's a lot of estimates and best guesses, but this is, we think, a defensible estimate. And now here, these slides show the cuts and the highlighting will show restoration. So on this particular slide, there were no restorations. This is city hall maintenance. The savings here were from fuel oil that were actuals, solar project, which is something we don't have to restore to, to, to realize a saving. You'll see on this slide, for example, in all subsequent slides, the yellow is a restoration. So you can see what, at a staff level at least, we are recommending that we restore and what we are recommending to maintain as a, as a cut. And, and I think from, as I mentioned, our, our real priority was to restore the things that were not, you know, based, based on actuals. So like I said, like you see here, we're not going to restore the fuel at the wheel lock, because we just don't have to pay that anymore.
Councilor Wilson?
Yeah, so we're not, so this is, this was actually one of the ideas. We're, we're proposing to use a Semper Bond annuity to, to cover tree removal. So this is a savings to general fund to be funded by Semper Bond.
My proposal is that, that the council currently has out of the annuity, we have $5,000 a year set aside for bike path maintenance. We have $10,000 set aside for something else, or maybe it's 10,000.
The bike path is the 10, trees is 5.
Okay, and, so, yeah, so we were, yeah, so we were, we're looking at, at using those sort of annual appropriations from the annuity to fund the, the tree removal stuff. So to build a fund similar to what we're doing with bike path maintenance.
Okay, so we remit the general fund of 12.5. I'm just trying to follow the path. And I like the idea of general fund. So you're taking $15,000 that has always been going from the Semper Bond fund to bike path maintenance and tree removal. But you've taken 12.5, that, so somebody's missing 12.5 somewhere, either tree removal or bike path.
I, I didn't have the numbers in front of me, so I'm, I'm gonna rely on Don.
Yeah, I know. I mean, this is my only question is, are we reducing, are, are we simply supplementing that money elsewhere, or are we reducing the amount of money that we use for bike path maintenance and tree removal?
No, yeah, I would say no to that as well.
That's what I'm struggling with. And you don't have to spend a lot of time on it, right?
The allocation normally goes into the shade tree fund for a line item for bike path maintenance. If we spend money to remove the trees, that would just come out of the shade tree fund, not the general fund. So I think the Semper Bond will still make the allocation to the said funds, but the expense will come out of those funds, not general fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, no, it makes sense. I just want to make sure that we're not, I mean, you know, I have a, an email that Nicholas is familiar with in my inbox regarding potential tree removal issue, and I just want to make sure we're not reducing the service in any way or reducing the funding. I understand what you're.
The intention, unfortunately, because I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, the intention is not to reduce the amount of money, but to, but to take it out of the Semper Bond annuity instead of out of the general fund.
Correct, okay. If that's the case, fine, thank you.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, $5,000 allocated to the, from the Semper Bond fund for trees is really for Main Street tree maintenance, replacement, and so on. It's fine if it's, if it's diverted to, to tree removal, but it's specific, it was not for tree removal, it was for Main Street tree maintenance.
I'm gonna suggest it. Thank you.
And just for a point of reference, we have, at the end of fiscal '23, we had $28,000 as a fund balance in shade treatment.
I, so it's a fund that's building up, or in a, allows fund to, I guess, complete a little bit. Okay, I get it.
I don't know, 90 to 100,000 in bike path maintenance. So it's nice to actually be able to set that money aside on a label basis instead of have it just be part of the general fund and go away every year, so.
You know, correct? Yes.
Just had a question for Nicholas or Don, the, the reduction in expenses for the solar projects, is that because of the revenue side is performing better, or?
It's just bringing it in line with what we spent today. And so what I see as the savings comes in the electricity line item, where this is just the.
So this is reflecting the reduction in cost, or just?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry. The, the screen froze, I was just trying to recover the screen.
At the very.
All right, so we can go, let me get back to the spots. We were.
13, 14.
Yeah. So I think we have gone through this. Unless there were questions on this slide, this was the prior slide. This is this is the last slide on the Build of the Community Services budget line. So again, here's, you can see our restorations. I think this was pretty straightforward, but welcome to questions. Permitting, we, this is the big one here, the junior plan. And then moving to the police department. You can see the restorations here. I think the, the, the hard one here was we, we kept the, the reduction on overtime. You know, I think we're, overtime is a, is a constant struggle just across the city. And so I think we're really, you know, when we came up with these cuts, we worked with the chief and deputy chief, and we thought we could achieve them. And so I think that our, our goal would be try to, to try to do that. They thought they could do it within the, the current rules, and so we're, we're gonna try to keep that. Otherwise, you can see the rest of the, the restorations here. Is that full, is?
A full elimination of that overtime number, does that make you nervous, Chief?
Well, I'll ask you, is it open? Does that make you nervous, Chief? No, I, you know, I think we, we're really careful with overtime because we know it's an easy place to cut. We know it's unpopular. We also know that if we cut it too much and we can't meet it, that just makes our life difficult in other areas. So we're very, when we went through this exercise, we were very, you know, how can you do it? What can you do to cut the overtime? And so I think they have, the chief and deputy chief have strategies to get there. And so we thought from, you know, we thought we could get there. We thought it was a good one to keep because it's, it's something we want to achieve anyways.
I mean, I've seen, you know, over the years, I've seen councils, not chiefs and not administrators, but I've seen councils sort of have this knee-jerk reaction and will look at overtime and will say, holy cow, 250,000 in overtime. Well, we could eliminate 20% of that. And we come up with this arbitrary number, recognizing that officers get injured in line of duty. People get sick, people need breathing, you know, life happens. And so I just want to make sure we're not, having seen instances where overtime was aggressively reduced and you couldn't quite hit the number, I just want to make sure that both of you are comfortable with leaving that number totally eliminated.
Okay.
And just for clarity, if you want to say something or ask questions, just.
Turn it out. Because I'm not looking at it that way.
This is the second page of the police department budget. This looks at the meters and dispatch. Again, these are pretty, I thought also pretty straightforward, but welcome to questions here.
I got one for you. Dee and I were talking about potentially increasing the enforcement on Friday evenings to get people who are illegally parking. And she said, I think those tickets were $200 apiece for parking illegal or in a handicap. I couldn't remember which one it was.
It was $50.
She was saying it was a big ticket.
Yeah, it's a big ticket compared to that, so it's $50.
Okay, so that's probably not going to be worth.
The return on the investment of having her work the overtime to do that enforcement, I don't think is there.
Okay. Fair enough. I appreciate it.
This is the cemetery's budget. This is an area we expect some discussion. So we, we had, take one guess. Look at that, this, take one, come on. So, we had restored 50%. So this was, this was a painful cut, and, and this was a cut, the, the 100% cut here was because we were really at a point of, we can only cut things that we have discretion over, and that's obviously when we do have discretion over. And so we reduced 100%, we restored 50%. I think that we can restore more, we can restore less, but I, you know, that's, that's the mindset. I think we, you know, I also proposed, based on what sort of I, I had heard from council during the last presentation, a full restoration of the library. That equals close to the cemetery restoration. So those are the kinds of choices, you know, we have to make, or we could restore it and the tax revenue will go up. Like that's, those are just the kind of decisions that, that we're facing. But we, this is an area where expect some, some comments.
Go for it. I, so seasonal staff means that, so again, it's one of those arbitrary cuts where, you know, and I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but okay, 50% of the seasonal staff, 50%. Well, you know, what does that mean for the condition of the cemetery? And in a community that was built in the granite industry where people are so proud of our cemeteries, and Jeff, you are proud of cemetery. I remember when we laid my dad to rest and you had time. And I'll never forget that as long as I live. And we're so proud of those cemeteries and you know, to not mow the cemetery, I mean, to not put veterans' flags out, you know, I'm a big old no. You know, and, and maybe we will increase the fees on people parking in handicapped zones and make it that way, but, but it won't be this way. And, and I'm not saying that challenge you are, well, I guess I am pushing back, but I'll, I'll push back on, on a reduction in seasonal staff. It's a cemetery, you know, some people get, maybe it's not cemetery, maybe it's all the medians downtown, where we're also trying to exhibit some pride. So, you know, the electricity, I don't quite understand.
That is just natural.
Oh, that just came down. Okay, but you know, the veterans, you know, veterans' flags and seasonal staff, I'd be, I'd be a big no on that right out of the box.
So what is that?
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilor Wilson on restoring funds to do the cemetery seasonal staff. I remember in, it was either 2020 or 2021, whatever the really hard financial year of COVID was, there were, we were for loving folks, it was tough. And folks in Berry were extremely understanding about everything that happened during COVID for our community, except why the cemeteries weren't taking care. I received more phone calls, emails, Facebook messages. So I, you know, I feel comfortable restoring all of this and telling the voters that it's going to have a impact on the hard budget, but I think that the folks in Berry want this service, come hell or high water.
Councilor, Derek?
I'd also like to echo the concerns about the seasonal staff with, the work that I do with the ADC as a council liaison, one of the things that the ADC is trying to do is where the bus tours coming in. So the bus tours can't come in and look at things like Hope Cemetery or Hummer Cemetery if it's not.
So the bus tours can't come in and look at things like Hope Cemetery or Hummer Cemetery if it's not hope, they don't want to go and look at it. Um, and that also brings in revenue to the community restaurants and businesses, things like that. I think that there has to be a way that we can be able to maintain the level of service people come to expect. Um, and really come to visit Berry because of the way that we hold our immunity.
All right.
Okay, so I was just gonna mention just a a very technical thing. The veterans' flags, I believe, is an actual, so that's not a a reduction, that's um the cost went down.
We got a, we got a request from the chair that they weren't gonna.
Oh, thank you.
Gonna um ask for money for twenty-five. It will go come back in twenty-five minutes.
Thank you.
And they are, they have actually applied for and they'll be part of the list of um coin drops for approval this year. So. That that's how they're going to help fund their acquisitions this year.
Got you. I'm looking at flags from my boss this year.
So that's um, so I just want to clarify that that um, that that wasn't a service for adoption. Um, you know, we we can certainly, I I'm. I'm seeing the will is to do a full restoration and we, you know, Don's gonna be plugged in um after the PowerPoint and we can see just what the impacts are and obviously. Um, change the projected tax rate or one or the other, but we can, I think we're getting a will of full restoration on the seasonal, we have to finish that all over here.
How much do we spend on flags in season?
About twenty-five hundred is their request. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's split between us and Barry Tom. Yeah, they count, they they buy the flags, then they count and and prorate based on exactly how many go in the city and how many go in the town.
Thank you. So we'll we'll calculate what that means after Don. Public Works, um, so these are uh the restorations here um on the engineering and traffic signals, uh no restoration on the engineering side. Uh, and just restoration of traffic, light maintenance. Um, there's no question, yeah, I'll go on to the next slide.
I have a question about that one. The um training development, historically, like succession planning has been a concern in BBWs, I'm just wondering, do you feel that that's? I don't think your folks are gonna miss anything critical.
I know, thanks, though. Um, and I guess we see first, you know, hopefully in, you know, a year we'll be able to restore those. So I'm sure we can skip a year, uh, uh, so give me time.
Nice, a small question. So the thing I get most complaints about is, is is the difficulty with the sidewalks? And is somebody coming out of sidewalk maintenance over there?
So that's the next slide, and that has been uh restored. So sidewalks, so you'll see this is the code, but you can see sort of a third of the way down, council stockwell, there's a supplies, a new SW construction, we have that sidewalk.
So this is different than what we have in our category.
Oh, it is. Oh, is there one more, an additional one?
Um, yeah.
The two thousand for asphalt.
Oh, that was, that was right, yeah. So that's, that was a big one.
Nothing changes number wise, which is.
It was a highlight again.
And but just following up on that point, the eighty-five hundred in sidewalk repair materials? So that's the one that I had on the front.
Eighty-five hundred?
On the right hand side.
Oh, with the nodes?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a combination.
That's a combination.
It's an aggregation of all the sidewalk. Yeah, so that that um, that showed the original cuts, they've all been, those have been restored. The eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred was a combination of everything that was sidewalk related.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Um, this is the fire and emergency medical services restoration. So same same strategy, um, the thing is the the most critical restored and the ones where we felt we could um survive without um retaining those cuts. With the.
Fire hose, I mean, I know we have this replacement schedule on fire hose replacements. So if you. Cut seven thousand out this year, does that just mean we're gonna be fourteen thousand next year?
For fire hose?
For fire, I know there's a scheduled replacement.
Uh, no, uh, so the fire hose is kind of a generalized term. It's appliances as well, some nozzles and stuff. That we um, that we look to uproot along with the hose. Um, so, no, we just would defer that for a year.
Okay, and you can defer that for a year safely without having it double up in assumption of here.
Yeah, okay. And uh this is uh getting to myself, Don, and Carol's budgets. Uh, there's some restorations here. Um, and. And uh restoring the city report. Um, we're gonna print in color again if this is accepted. So, so that that covers it with the sort of the the presentation and going through the cuts and restorations. I know we, I'm gonna close this out. Um, and we can, uh, Don will be able to plug in. Um, and we, she'll be able to go into the line by line, but we're we're. Prepared to, you know, we're here to answer questions. Um, we'll start, I guess, the the place to start would be by plugging in a full restoration of cemeteries.
Uh, so while you're starting that, one question on the, don't bother putting it back up. But under the admin cuts, not restoring the humane society fees, so what does that mean for, because I know they do a lot of our annual control and.
They.
It was just bringing the word to the axle.
Yeah.
What they build us in twenty.
Oh, great.
All right.
So the cuts in expenses, the baseline of those cuts was the approved.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah. That's the base one.
Yeah, twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-four.
That's the base one.
Yeah, okay.
So I fully restored the cemetery for time. That's the five point one.
So that's.
I'm sorry, Don, did you say five point one or five point, oh, two? Five point one.
So. Which, and if you put a million dollars up under state aid, obviously that.
That will lower.
Yeah, hoping that that number will be more like one point two. What happens if you put one point two in there, as long as you can, as long as you're playing?
Great question.
On spreadsheet.
Two nine one.
Yeah, which is where we really need to be, want to be. Um, so if you put that in a even million. You know, that's the, you know, that's the trouble with this exercise and honestly why I am, I am absolutely a proponent of voting our budget in May. Take that number out of there for a minute, Don, and add, you know. And then, no, and do raise, do need to be raised by tax. I mean, you know, we just went through this exercise. Oh, we're not gonna mow the cemetery. Uh, oh, we can, you know. Okay, we can reduce seven thousand in fire hose. We can do, you know, we just went through this painful exercise. If that. Million dollars doesn't materialize, we're looking at a fourteen percent increase. Now, obviously, you know, that's not going to be acceptable to the voters, I don't believe. Um, we haven't even added in uh what things are gonna look like on the school side of things. And. You know, I I understand that some of you may have differences of opinion. Um, but when I have to make an important decision here, I ask. And now I've included you in the club, Don. Uh, I ask Carol, I ask the city manager, uh, and now I ask Don as well. They're our most senior members of the administration. And when, and sometimes Carol and Nicholas, they don't always agree on everything, but.
I figured the table was set.
Well, not to your, well, not to your face.
That's where we lost, I think.
Yeah, and you, and we've got the remote, so we're struggling with this. Take nothing from the legislature, or or, you know, we can play with numbers all night, put five hundred in it. Um, and I can tell you, it's it's tough down in the legislature. I do appreciate the bill that our representative has put forward. I know we have support in the Senate. Um, you know, Councilor Watson's act's been having his conversations, I've been having mine, and many of you have been having yours. So I know the support for it. Um, and I know, and right now it feels like we could be looking at north of a seven figure. Assistance level. Um, you know, the state's looking at at it with, but we're a long way from the finish line. And, you know, if you think this discussion was, you know, talking about those cuts was difficult. Like I said, take that million dollars out, that's what you're staring at. So I really don't understand why it is not kicking the can down the road. It is not relying on funny money. It's allowing the data to come to you. We're gonna get the answer. But we are not gonna get the answer by the end of January, I will guarantee you that. So why this council is not listening to remote senior members of its administration, I I I don't even know. Because when we don't, when we stop listening to people, why do we even employ them? Why don't we just, hey, there's a hundred thousand dollar cut right there. Sorry, Nick, that's. So honestly, I would make a motion that tonight that we um, that we change our town meeting date vote to, when would it be in May, Carol?
I think it's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I agree completely with Councilor Lozon, how we're doing is buying ourselves more time to make a better educated decision so we can be more physically responsible when it comes to the tax dollars.
Lauren?
And is the one person here who is going to be harmed the most by? I can tell you I support this a hundred percent, even though it means that not only am I doing two more months, but I'm doing two elections instead of one. Because of course the schools still have to vote in March. Um, it it makes so much sense, gives us more opportunity to uh um to lobby. Uh, and find out where things are going. Um, it it makes a a huge difference and will allow us to give really good numbers to the voters in May. And I forgot that it was giving Carol a chance, so now I need to get more.
No, I, and and really, the, you know, sorry for getting a little bit worked up, but it but it is frustrating when there. There there are a lot of things competing and and I I couldn't even offer a firm prediction right now because so much can happen. Between now and adjournment. And um, and the soon, you know, we need to know that number. There's going to be a number there. I just don't know, I I I couldn't give you a clue about what the number is. I don't know if it's five hundred, I don't know if it's a million. I don't know if it's full one point four. Um, and it it makes a big difference because. Obviously, if we receive a million dollars, we can all breathe a sigh of relief. Well, we're still going up five percent, which is more than our senior citizens got when the social security checks came in January. But, y- you know, if if we get five hundred thousand, you know. We've got a lot of work to do and we're going to be talking again about more fire hoes, more seasonal staff, more deferred maintenance. Um, so I'm, I've thought a lot about it. I am one hundred percent committed to it.
We have to uh a- approve a warrant thirty days before, um, at least thirty days before, so that'll give us till at least the, you know, the fourteenth of April.
April ninth.
April ninth, yeah, is the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So it gives us a lot more time between January thirtieth and April ninth. To get further numbers.
We'll have a much better ballpark by then, we'll have the BAA done by then, it's gonna be much.
So your recommendation obviously has to change.
Not at all.
As yours, as yours. Okay, thank you. I'm a yes voter.
So. Yeah, and and I'll be honest with you, I've talked to several people and it's probably best for our city, so I'll also be voting yes for this. Even though I was a staunch no prior, so.
Well, 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 let's just get it all out on tape. I don't know if more people will come in May or less people will come in May. I don't know if that gives Republicans an advantage or if it gives Democrats an advantage. I don't really care. What I care about is following the recommendation of the remote senior staff members. That's what I care about. It's best for the city.
Good. Um, with that.
But isn't this more for next week? Isn't this any more?
It is, so we'll probably.
We have to ratify, they're running, this goes out on the agenda.
Yep, uh, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, so we'll put it on.
And I would like that to be put on the consent agenda for next week.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have to put that on the consent agenda for ratification.
Yes, I would.
The rat, the moving to a consent.
Whoa, we could do this online, yeah.
All right.
So we just got, we put that back up on the screen just because I get. Now that you're playing with these numbers, and I'm not, I'm not just doing whatever, it helps me stick the numbers in my head. So as we have conversations, so we have, um, if we had five hundred in there, Don. I know you did that, I just wanted to see the 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 tax increase. I know we're at, we were at what, fourteen percent with zero? Yeah, or we're looking at maybe? Thank you, sorry to keep doing this to you. If you just.
I just tried to say one point five nine.
I said fourteen five nine. So I'm sorry.
Nine point seven.
So we're ten percent with, you know, half a million bucks, and we're at, we're at five, oh, that's really interesting. Every hundred thousand moves it down one percent. Oh, okay, now I can remember that all the time.
Captain could do this online, so just be mindful.
No, 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 it doesn't. No, no, it does. Every, if you think about it, we were counting, one point four billion brings us to zero, roughly. Um, and zero brings us to fourteen percent. So if you just think about those numbers, it's a correlation of one percent. Okay, cool, thanks. Read it. I'm good, done.
And that's not even taking.
Definitely drop in one more.
Could we adjust for our CLAs? One point five nine.
Percent increase.
No.
I'm sorry, you gotta speak aloud.
All right.
They don't want to hear that.
I I think when you add in the school percentage increases, it's really, really bad. So we'll see that going forward.
Like, well, and it gives us more time to assess that as well. Like I said, I'm. Comfortable with extending the decision and giving the numbers a chance to materialize, so.
All right, and you did the I know. Believe me, I know. All right, any other discussion? All right, so we'll put these.
Just a question, did you, the spreadsheet, uh, there was a green and red highlights. Who was me?
That's me.
I didn't see like.
So the green are um just for my old rec- recognition of what the state, that's my playing number, what the state gave us.
Oh, all right.
The red numbers were out of our Department of Budget Congress that um items I needed to follow up on. And they've been done. It's just clearing up the colors.
All right, moving on to upcoming business. And your story, Captain?
Yeah, we have, um, I was gonna think of like, uh, we're gonna have, um. Capitol Building Plan Update uh next week. Um, we um are gonna have a. A volunteer update from Adam Jacobs, I believe, who was doing volunteer coordination work occurring in flood, recovery that is out of my mind. Uh, and there's a couple other items that I possibly forgetting that are written on my whiteboard.
We'll ratify them.
We'll ratify a series of motions that happened today, uh, including the resolution and the town meeting day move. To lose the bench that. to include the venture.
Right, Councilor Lozak?
Discussion about safe injections sites on the agenda. I know that that's, um, still pending in the legislature. And, um, you know, I've spoken with, um, service providers who have just concerns about what that means for municipalities. So we don't read the, read the bill, it currently allows for, um, administration by the Agency of Human Services, um, I believe they have funding for two sites, and they have obviously not named them. But, you know, just conventional wisdom would say, well, you know, we're only in, and rock, because you wanna cover a larger area of the state, but that's not definite. And what they don't talk about is, well, well, and the question I was asking is, what if a third party, I understand that it's the Agency of Human Services, but what if a third party wanted to start a safe in injection site and then was endorsed by the Agency of Human Services, provided the Agency of Human Services didn't have the fund? Could they do that? And there's just so many questions that can't be answered, and I think at some point, they have, you know, I mean, they have to ask the municipalities, would you like to weigh in? And if we're going to weigh in, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from provide, you know, health providers in our city. Um, for example, people in recovery, does this, this is really help people in recovery, or does it hurt their chances for for sobriety? And I think it is just surprising to me that no one's really been talking to municipalities, since you're sort of doing, making it, you can do this. You know, it's legal, and we don't really, so I'd just like to keep talking about it, that's all, so if we could put it on the agenda, set on for. And if you'd like, I can reach out to a few of the folks that I've talked to, or every culture and folks around the city, and maybe see if they'd like to just minimal way in on the discussion, that'd be okay.
And and I forgot one item to take, I forgot it, because I don't have to do the presentation for it, which is, um, the EM and A and R are gonna be here to do some, I've been working with Councilor Stockwell as we work on the Northland Engagement, they're gonna have some river scientists to talk about, um, just our, our plant risks moving forward, and a lot of really interesting river science, uh, so they'll be here on the sixteenth as well.
All right, anything else, Councilor Deering?
Um, are we gonna be able to get the results from Mr. Jacobs with the survey? Um, I thought they were just gonna be doing canvassing as far as like, who'll know about the engagement, not handing out surveys and and getting responses.
Yeah, I think that the data in aggregate, uh, could be provided, uh, we'll probably have to do some redactions of personal information like names and phone numbers and things like that, but, uh, yeah, part of the, the idea was to both get people interested and aware of the meetings that were happening, and also just collect some of the data. I think one of the challenges, uh, and I'll be talking to semi dev ops about this tomorrow, um, you know, I I I've been really uh, consistent, you know, the the state, uh, BPM response was really strong in a lot of areas, they really were. The one area where it was a real struggle was two-on-one, uh, and so we, um, we were, we've all been operating, I think, at a data deficit, and so we're trying to do a little bit of catch-up on that. So we took advantage of, of people that were gonna be engaging with residents who were most impacted to get some of the, um, some of that on-the-ground data. But I think certainly, um, in an aggregated format, I don't think there should be an issue with that.
Okay, yeah, I I just know that there were some people that definitely would have been more engaged, um, had it been a session like that, than just going out and knocking on the door and saying, hey, we have some ideas engaging in session.
Yeah.
Perfect. So just, I I think a lot more communication would be helpful for what's going on with, uh, test.
Yep.
Um, and that entire group, I think, we all kinda need to know what's going on, and I feel like there's a good group of individuals in the community that have no idea what's going on, and they're asking counselors like me, and I don't know. So I'm asking you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, to see the survey come from a resident, um, over the week, well, yesterday, um, and not to know anything about it, just have the city of various seal on it, say, I don't know. Um, so it'd be really helpful to get all the information.
Absolutely, I'll I'll make sure that that stuff gets circulated, um, ahead of time, so that you you can see sort of what they're doing. But yeah, the the idea was, as part of the canvassing, to take advantage of a a point of contact with the resident to collect some of that data that, um, that we've been missing and that we wanted, just to get a sense of what we're doing, but yeah, I will, I'll be here.
I support the the engagement, and I think it's needed, um, we've been doing a lot of that ourselves, but to see a city effort, you know, to do that is great, and I just think that we could have more buy-in.
Perfect.
All right, Councilor Stockwell?
There are multiple ways for people to participate in, in sharing their ideas about what should happen or not happen in the event. So the survey is one way, go to go to meetings where people know that this kind of meeting is another way, award meetings is another way, there'll be something on the city website. So there's gonna be different ways for people to say whatever they most comfortable with, and you will be able to easily see that.
Where?
On the city website.
Any additional items for future?
Just a question, do we have any indication, um, regarding how many people are interested in participating? We talked about that, you know how you get an invite? Or someone has, you you know, you'll see it on various social media outlets, where someone's planning an event, and someone can say, yes, I'm planning on attending to do that. It's kind of nice, I hate to keep playing this record, but my biggest concern is that we'll have more people than we can capacity and be turning folks away.
We can, we'll send it, I I don't know if they've sent one up, I'm double checking, I'll put those on, um, and I think they got some good data out of the survey that may inform some of that as well. Uh, but I will, I will make sure they'll speak to Tess, Pat, and the Councilor Stockwell about that.
All right. With that, moving on to roundtable, Councilor Wazzaak.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right, Councilor Stockwell, sorry.
I did some of the canvassing on Sunday, it was, it was a lovely day, of course, for canvassing, Pastor Shambel and I were out, and, uh, it was really interesting and kinda sad to walk around the streets, pretty deserted and, uh, lots of places, crowded people, there's no one there. And next.
Councilor Deering?
Uh, I had a great first session of the welcoming and engaging communities cohort today. Sent a lot of time trying to say that all day, it's a mouthful, uh, but really just talked about, um, customer service. What are we doing to engage people and welcome them, uh, to our community? How do we, um, you know, how's our customer service essentially towards other people? So Councilor Stockwell and I had a nice little session, um, got paired up in that group, um, and had a good conversation about that. Um, so it's just nice to, you know, know that we have to be welcoming and engaging to people, and the way that we speak to people is really important, so just try to be open and reasonable.
All right, Councilor.
I'm hiding. Um, I I agree with Councilor Stockwell completely, um, it was very enlightening talking to people and understanding their point of view. And also seeing that they were interested in the possibility of coming to the meeting and and saying what they thought, because they have a lot to say in, in many directions.
Councilor Lozak?
Good.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to executive session.
Move to findings.
Second.
Okay.
Trust here.
All right, all those in the chamber say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to go to executive session. I'm sorry?
I think, yes, counsel.
You just.
Well, um.
Oh, and the man, okay, well, all right, so counsel, man.
Thanks, everyone.
Counselor.
Counselor man.
Always, Carol.
All right.
All right. There's a motion.
Really?
Is there a second?
Who's second?
Okay.
See me off on this one.
Discussion, all those in the chamber say aye. All right, five minutes. To the new session.
All right, uh second is it? You said second?
Yeah, I did.
All right, and no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And unanimous consent. Make less if you would.
Bye everyone.
Thank you. It is hard setting.
Bye Heather.